...stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. We will call the matters in the order which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have one, so you can follow along to see when your matter will be called. Now, if you plan to address this tonight, we ask you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone, so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. And from those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared. These minutes are available both at Village Hall in hard copy form and on our website at wilmette.com. Also, our village board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet, and if you look up, you can actually see the cameras in the corners of the room. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors to follow the proceedings of the village board, see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask, and the policies we create. You can find archived videos of village board and other local government meetings on our website at wilmette.com. And I would like to personally thank all the residents of Wilmette who regularly tune into Channel 6 and follow the workings of their local governments. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on our website on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 333 pages, and we've had an opportunity to review all the information in the packet, so if you do plan to address this tonight, we ask you to tell us the most relevant, most material, most important points that you really want us to focus on. Finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible. So, as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cell phones and other devices, and while we're turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
President Balinski?
Here. We're all here, so we obviously have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. During Public Comment, we ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to address the board on a matter which is not on the agenda. Members of the audience may address the board on matters which are on the agenda tonight, when that particular matter is called. So, is there any member of the audience who would like to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda? May I see a show of hands?
Yes, sir. Only one tonight. You picked a good night. It's budget night.
Is it?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
So, you have to hang around for that, then?
Is there two meetings or one meeting tonight?
Just one meeting tonight.
Okay. Sometimes they do a bunch of meetings. So, I'm Mark Wiremuller. I live on Lawndale Street. Every once in a while, I come to a village board meeting to talk about property taxes. I'm hoping the board thinks about property taxes. And so, I had a couple of quick points, and I'll try to be under two minutes here. And hello to everybody out in Channel 6 TV land. Hello, I know several people I asked to watch me, so, and, or they'll see me later on the YouTube thing. So, people have called me a taxpayer advocate, because I'm very concerned about property taxes. Basically, I'm a greedy person. I like to keep more of my own money. So, like many people that in the room here who want to keep their own money. One thing that came to mind recently is Treasure Island closing. So, Treasure Island is a business, a fairly sizable business in Wilmette. There's six of them nationwide. It was started by the Kimbarrows family 55 years ago. So, it's very sad that they're closing. It's not real clear why they're closing, but I have ideas why they're closing. One reason might be the minimum wage. The minimum wage is going to hurt businesses, in my opinion, in the Wilmette area, because it's going to be just too expensive to do business here, especially when other towns have opted out nearby, where you can do business for less money. So, Treasure Island, maybe that's one of the reasons in the city. Maybe they closed because of the bag tax, which is another thing that's been devastating for Juul. They're charging seven cents for a bag in Chicago. So, I'm just concerned that the board is not thinking about this, how we can create more business. I think about the Ford property that sat empty for years, 10 or 20 years, and the board, none of you guys were probably around, but they just fooled around with it. I'm not sure if the village should have even got into the business of buying property. Another issue I brought up, I think, three years ago, the board actually hired attorneys to appeal the appeal of Baker Square. And I had the famous quote that I like pie, and the board agreed with me. Most people liked pie. But Baker Square is still there. They had a sizable tax bill, property tax bill, and they got an appeal, and they got a huge reduction, and the village, your village board hired attorneys to have the reduction reversed, which is just shocking to me. So, this is the kind of things I'm thinking about. Also, thinking about pensions. It'd be great if the village modified the pensions on police fire and other workers with the village, maybe IRAs and 401Ks, maybe set example for the other 7,000 taxing districts in Illinois by, Wilmette could be the one. We're the ones who started fixing the pension. So, Illinois has 43,000 elected officials. One other project we're working on, this pertains to the village here, is the Kennelworth Library Board meets six times a year. If you're familiar with the Kennelworth Library, they have no library and no books. They give their money to Wilmette and Winnetka, which is another board. I would ask that they merge these boards. I'm not sure if Wilmette needs a village board, a park board, a zoning board, and a library board. So, those are my thoughts. Thanks for letting me speak, and have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to be heard this evening? Okay, we'll move on to Item 3, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the village board are placed on the Consent Agenda. All items that begin with the number 3 are on the Consent Agenda, so tonight, that means, if you start on Page 1, Item 3.1, it's all the items on Page 2, and the first two items on Page 3, ending with Item 3.14. Items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight, and if item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So, I'll begin by asking, is there any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? May I see a show of hands? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to asking if there are any of the trustees that would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda. Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
It's been moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Balinski?
Aye. Motion carries. The Consent Agenda has been adopted. If you are here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it's been approved. And I'll clarify, for people who aren't here tonight, again, all the items beginning with 3 have been approved, and that includes Land Use Item 3.4, 3.6, 3.7, and 3.8. So, if that's your item, it was just approved. There will be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda, so you are free to leave, but of course, more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Now, I see people that are leaving. It's early. Plenty of time to stop by one of our restaurants before you head home, okay?
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Item 4, which is Report of Officers, and the first item is Item 4.1, which is proclamation designating October 24, 2018, as World Polio Day. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Rotary Club of Wilmette and the Rotary Club of Wilmette Harbor are members of Rotary International, the world's first and still one of its largest nonprofit service organizations founded in Chicago, Illinois in 1905. And whereas the Rotary motto "Serves Above Self" inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary, in 1985, launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize all of the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by over 99.9% since 1988, and the world now stands on the threshold of eradicating this dread disease and thereby eliminating the threat of polio-caused paralysis to every child in the world. And whereas members of the Rotary Club of Wilmette and the Rotary Club of Wilmette Harbor continue to contribute their time and their resources to support Polio Plus and the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, and whereas their efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. Therefore, I, Robert T. Balinski, President of the Village of Wilmette, do hereby proclaim October 24, 2018, as World Polio Day in Wilmette, and do hereby encourage all residents to join the Rotarians of our local Rotary Clubs in the fight for a polio-free world. Now, I will point out that one of our members, Trustee Pierce, is the former past president, or is the past president, rather, of the Rotary Club of Wilmette Harbor. So, Trustee Pierce, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add, given your, how long have you been a Rotarian?
27 years.
Right, and you've made trips, and you're very active in the Rotary.
Yes. Yeah. And just thank you to the village for recognizing October 24th as World Polio Day. When Rotary got involved in trying to eradicate polio, there was approximately 200,000 to 300,000 cases per year. In 2018, so far, I'm not exact, but I think it's, there's been about eight cases this year. Pakistan and Afghanistan are the two countries, and there could be Nigeria as well. But it's a phenomenal effort, not only by Rotary, the Gates Foundation, but many organizations involved in immunization efforts and education efforts. If a disease can be eradicated, it's just a phenomenal thing for the world. On October 24th, there will be an iron lung displayed outside Rotary Headquarters in downtown Evanston all day, just kind of creating awareness and showing people what it used to be like to have to, you know, experience an iron lung for people who had polio. And there was actually one at the farmer's market here a couple weeks ago. So, anyway, hopefully soon, this disease will be done, but thank you to the village for helping us with this educational process.
Thank you, Trustee Pierce. Item 4.2, under Report of Officers, is a request for an executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2, Sub C, Sub 1 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, and discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed pursuant to Section 2, Sub C, Sub 21 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. We'll move on now to the report from our village manager, Mr. Frenzer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, we'd like to remind all the residents of the community, and especially all the kids, to bring their parents this Saturday to the Fire Department here at Lake Avenue and Green Bay Road, 1304 Lake, for the Fire Department Open House. This week is Fire Prevention Week, and we are also celebrating the Wilmette Fire Department's 125th anniversary. The Wilmette Historical Society will have a display showing the history of the Fire Department. We'll have fire trucks, firefighting and paramedic equipment, special rescue equipment, and more on display. Kids are also reminded to bring their favorite stuffed animal. Our specially-trained paramedics will perform a checkup on your favorite teddy bear, so you can experience what it would be like to be a patient. And there'll be plenty of other activities as well, so please join us this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. till noon at the fire station at Lake and Green Bay. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Frenzer. Next report is from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Next item is Item 5, which is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight, so we'll move on to our Standing Committee reports. First up is the Land Use Committee, Trustee Pierce.
Item 6.11, I move we grant a variation to permit a parking space in a side yard adjoining a street to permit the widening of the existing driveway in accordance with the plan submitted for the property at 1500 Maple Avenue.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. This item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, so it will need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the zoning board. Mr. Adler, would you approach and summarize the issues in this
As was mentioned, this is a request to locate a parking space in a side yard adjoining a street at 1500 Maple. It received a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. If the village board feels that ultimately standards of review have been met, the village board would vote yes, and the driveway would be able to be widened. If no, the request is denied, and the driveway cannot be widened regardless of the decision. And you have a memo in here from the village engineer, the applicant does have the right to seek approval to construct a conforming parking pad off the alley. From their dismissal, we know that is not their first choice. Variation standards.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
But the memo, the memo from the village engineer, what it says is that normally we would grant that second access. There's a, let me back up just a bit. I know you know what I'm talking about, but for the benefit of others listening. So, typically, a homeowner has either alley access or driveway access. You don't get both. And in the case of a corner lot, sometimes there are stranger circumstances, and in this case, the garage is off the house, and so there is a driveway as opposed to there being an alley garage. Normally, we wouldn't let someone have access from the alley if they already have a driveway or vice versa, but one of the exceptions is this particular case where we might or we normally would grant that exception.
Right.
Is that the right way to interpret the memo, I guess?
It is, and I think what the village engineer pointed out is, if a house has alley access but no street access, almost never would we grant the access off of the street. But when property has access, parking accessed off of the street, and they want to go off the alley, it might make sense to allow it off the alley, because we'd rather have those cars
In the alley versus visible from the street?
Off the street.
Right, okay. So, that's the public policy reason for doing that as well?
Right. But both requests would have to be noticed to the neighbors, and they would have to be given opportunity to indicate if they object. But again, the village engineer was just indicating that historically, those requests have been typically granted. Here's the findings and facts on which the decision was based. As you know, you have a majority of the board who didn't feel that the standards were met yet. Am I a minority who felt that they were met? And then, do you have, just so, if you weren't able to determine, figure out where the driveway was being widened, the red area there shows the area where it was being widened, and the parking space would be located. And then, lastly, here's an aerial of the property and some adjacent properties.
So, let me ask a question with regard, what makes this an issue such that it's creating another parking place? You know, so you can have a driveway, and people often park their cars in their driveway, in particular, in my neighborhood, where there are all these old one-car garages that don't even fit one car anymore, because they're too narrow. So, you have cars in the driveway, but what, what are the circumstances here that create a new parking place in essence? Is it the widening past the width of the door, or is it an area-space thing?
It is. It, what, what we look at is, if you need to move a car, so if you have a, if you have a driveway, and you have to move a car in the driveway to access the garage, it's not considered a legal parking space. That's the driveway to access the garage. Now, there's no limitation on being able to park there. We know people park in their driveways all the time. But when you're creating a parking space that is solely for the purpose of parking in that required yard, the required front yard, the required side yard adjoining a street, that's what requires relief. Give you an example. Let's just imagine that the rear portion of the house wasn't there, and they were able to pull in that parking space that they're showing, out of the side yard adjoining a street and into the buildable area, that would not be considered an illegal parking space, because it would be going to a legal parking space in the buildable area.
Okay, so I didn't follow that. Anybody follow that?
If you imagine that this was a three-car garage instead of a two-car garage, and that new space was going to the third garage space, that would be legal. We wouldn't be asking for a variation here.
Because it wouldn't be considered a parking space, because it is access to the garage, which is
A conforming parking space.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, that's probably the right way.
So, it's basically, you know, excess driveway that's not going straight into the garage.
And there's no choice but then to park a car in the yard. You can't, you wouldn't then pull into an area that we consider conforming.
Okay. And the public policy reason for this is aesthetic, right? I mean, it's just, we, we, we have made a decision as a community that we don't want a lot of impervious surface in our front yards. That's not a variation required here, given the math. But we also don't want a lot of cars parked in the front yards. But fundamentally, it comes down to a sort of preserving neighborhood aesthetic thing. There's no public safety issue or anything like that. It's just
Correct.
The decision is made by the, by the board when they enacted the zoning ordinance. That's, that's not something we like.
Correct. The idea, and, you know, maybe looking at Maple, of just putting a parking space off of Maple and parking in front of the house, you know, I, I think there's people who would, who would rather not see that. There's people, you know, who, who, you know, don't like their neighbor parking in their driveway, but if it's, you know, if the driveway's there, it's, it's something that we do allow.
Okay, questions for Mr. Adler? I tried to hit the big ones that I thought were on multiple people's minds.
The, coming in off the alley, that is a decision, it's not a public hearing, it's the village engineer's decision.
Correct, right.
But you said there was notice, there was notice that would be provided, so it could be administratively approved, but you'd still notice the neighbors that you're doing it. Okay.
So, just to clarify, because this is a corner lot, so the garage, it almost looks like there's two fronts, but the garage is the side yard, and then there's a front door.
Correct.
If they'd had a front-loading garage by their front door, are the rules any different? Are the ordinances?
No, no, the rules, the rules would be the same.
So, there's a limitation on, in other words, there's a limitation on an additional parking space in a front yard, just like there isn't a side yard?
Right. If, if the garage was off the front, you would have the two spaces that are leading into the two-car garage, where they would be able to park on the driveway, but if they wanted to widen it like this, it would be the same sort of relief. They would probably, yeah, that would be the same relief.
And if they had a one-car garage, and, you know, smaller driveway, and had this request for a pad or whatever, same issue. I mean, they would still need a variation.
Correct. If, if, if what they're putting down doesn't lead to a parking space, which is either in a garage, or what I tried to explain and did do a very good job, a parking space that falls fully out of the required side yard adjoining a street, it would then be considered non-conforming.
So, a path to any legal parking spot is okay?
Exactly.
But not, not extra, extra surface?
If this property had, I think this is pretty close to the maximum coverage in the side yard joining a street, but if you imagine that driveway curving and then going in the middle of their backyard, excuse me, that technically would be considered conforming. Not a good solution, but conforming.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Adler? All right. Yes, please. So, I see parking pads all over West Wilmette, so how did those come to be? Has it preceded the last round of zoning?
Yeah. I mean, I would suppose maybe some were put in without permits. Some would be old and grandfathered in. Other might be ones that received variations. I believe some homes in Kennelworth Gardens have granted, got, received variations in the past. So, just depends on the situation.
Okay. So, no more questions for Mr. Adler. I will now ask the applicant to please Okay, welcome. So, the members of the board have reviewed the report from the zoning board, so they are familiar with the project, and as you can tell, we've just been talking about some of the specifics. So, you certainly can give a little bit of background there, but we sort of know the project. It's a pretty simple project. It's not a big complicated remodel or anything. And Mr. Adler put on the screen, but I'm going to read what the zoning board said. For each of their cases, they have a finding, and their finding is, this one's pretty short. Sometimes they're really long. But a majority of the zoning board of appeals finds that the request does not meet the variation standards of Section 5 dot 4 dot F of the zoning ordinance. Specifically, there are no conditions of the property that are imposing a practical difficulty or particular hardship. The applicant could construct a conforming parking pad at the rear of the property. So, in your comments, that's what we need you to address. Tell us why we should not agree with the zoning board's point of view on that. And with that, I will give you the floor.
So, the way that the zoning board left it
Introduce yourself to us if you would.
Oh, hi, sorry. I'm Carolyn Sennett at 1500 Maple Avenue. The way that it was left with the zoning board was that we could do a parking pad in the back. We did go through, I found out afterwards, that that wasn't necessarily a done deal, and all of the, what Mr. Adler presented, that all came after the meeting. The one main point that I want to make, though, in addition to the fact that it's not a done deal to do it in the backyard, is that putting a backyard parking pad would increase the impervious surface by over 350 square feet, because we do not currently have access to the alley, since we don't use the back, we don't use a garage off the alley. It's all fenced in, so not only would we build a parking pad back there, which would likely be something like concrete, we would also have to build a path to get back there. And we've calculated it at approximately, I don't know, 360 square feet. We would also have to take down several mature trees. In your packet, I took some photos of the trees. If you want, I have copies. I can put them up on the board. The alternative, and what we proposed, is that we need to resurface our driveway anyway. It is currently asphalt. And so, what we have proposed doing is removing the asphalt driveway and replacing it with a wider driveway that is paver brick. And in doing so, we would only have to add 111 square feet of impervious surface, and it would be in paver brick. So, it would not only aesthetically look better even than what we have now, but it would be more environmentally friendly. And I think in light of particularly the recent resolutions that the village board passed with regard to the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, Greenest Region Compact, and the Climate Mayor's, is I would think that the village board would want to incentivize residents or homeowners to choose the more environmentally friendly option. So, what we would be doing is taking away asphalt and putting in pavers, and we are committed to using pavers. In fact, the reason that we don't have an impervious surface problem is because by using pavers, we do get a bonus for that. So, we would have to use pavers and adding 111 square feet. Versus having 350 square feet, the backyard parking pad would definitely be concrete. We would have the option of either repaving the asphalt, or using concrete, or doing pavers. We could do whatever we want for the existing driveway, and we would also have to remove several mature trees. So
So, how many cars do you own?
Three.
Okay, and the reason you want the pad is so you don't have to move cars to get a car out of the garage?
Correct. So, right now, we usually park the third car on the street, because there's a lot of jogging in and out, and since we're right on the sidewalk, we don't like to be pulling cars unnecessarily in and out of the driveway. We usually move it out during the day. There is limited parking on both 15th and Maple, because you can only park on one side of the street. It is also probably the closest street to the train station that doesn't have any sort of permit parking, so during the day, it's actually used quite frequently by commuters. They actually will park there and then walk. A lot of people on Wilmette Avenue also park on 15th Street. Plus, we have snow restrictions and leaf restrictions. So, what we'd like to do is be able to provide a space, so that we're not moving cars back and forth, we're pulling a car off the street, and we're doing so in a way that makes more sense environmentally than the alternatives.
And you provided a lot of pictures of large driveways, but when I drove the neighborhood, I really didn't, you know, I drove your block, the block, one further, as well as 15th, and it wasn't a very heavily drivewayed area.
So, what you have to understand is, if you took a careful look at Maple Avenue, you can see that the area west of 15th Street was developed separately from the area east of 15th Street. And so, the entire area west of 15th Street is kind of a hodgepodge, like if you, even if you
Yeah, there's some old driveways that there aren't garages anymore, yeah.
Exactly. There's pieces of property where somebody actually sold off the back of their property, so they don't have alley access, so then they are able to bring a car in off Wilmette Avenue, because they sold it off to have another house kind of built along the alley.
Yeah, we wouldn't let them do that anymore.
Right.
Back in the day, it happened, right.
But it's there now. And so, it, there's just sort of a hot, there's cars parked everywhere. I mean, even in the alley, if you, if you look down the alley, I mean, there's just sort of cars everywhere. And so, I think what I was trying to say is, within, there was a very lengthy discussion at the zoning board meeting about, you don't ever see the possibility of three cars. That came up quite a bit, that we don't ever see driveways that could possibly accommodate three cars. Those photos were basically saying, yeah, you actually do, and you do within a block of where it of where I live.
But I, again, I didn't see a lot within a block of where you live, and I didn't go north of Wilmette Ave, but, you know-
Okay, I, I didn't look north of Wilmette Ave either. So there were two very obvious ones where there's three right there, but the entire length of 16th Street, which is a block away, every single one of those houses has a driveway that runs from 16th Street into their, all the way into their backyard.
Mm-hmm. Right, which, which are, which aren't considered parking pads because they're paths to-
Exactly. But there was a visual that was repeated over and over during the meeting of the possibility that you could have, that somebody might possibly park three cars, and, and that seemed to be un-aesthetically, or aesthetically not pleasing.
Right. Questions?
Well, just following up, I mean, clearly what's driving your request is the hassle of moving cars, you know, and, you know, all of us understand that, and the, you know, like, several of the pictures, following up on what President Polanski was talking about, is like, one of the houses on Wilmette Avenue, who I know real well, and they have a very long driveway, and for 25 years, they've had to jockey cars in and out because they've got, you know, vans and cars, and as opposed to having two or three cars on Wilmette Avenue, which is kind of the policy I think we don't want, and that, that's, it, it seems convenience is really what's driving your request, and then that's really in conflict with the, the policy we have.
I mean, I will say that it's convenience, but the fact that we can still stick something in the backyard, we have plenty of space in the backyard, is, you know, an option we might take.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
It's not the road we went down, but that is just not desirable for so many reasons.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I understand, I mean, I, I know when you say desire, or it's not as desirable, it's because of the trees and the added impervious surface.
Right.
But it does take it off the street, because where I wrestle is, you're putting that third car there, it's gonna more impact your neighbors versus the alley, is that car is not gonna be as, you're gonna see that car, for the most part, it's not right there on the street, that's where I struggle. I don't know what the hardship is, I agree with the zoning board on this one. This is a matter of convenience?
No, but it-
There's no hardship.
Yes, we would build a parking pad, the reality is that parking pad's gonna be pretty inconvenient, so it would still be on the street probably most of the time, and it would be moved somewhere at night for, more for security reasons than anything else. I mean, maybe we would keep it there without moving it, but it would, it's still sort of on the street, and it's still in the middle of traffic.
At night, aren't you parking that, where are you parking that car today at night?
Usually we park it in the driveway. Unless there's a snow alert, or unless the person whose car is in the garage is leaving at 5:30 in the morning and doesn't want to wake somebody to move the cars around.
Other questions for the applicant?
I guess more of a comment, I, I went past your house, I, I guess yesterday, I was in that area, and I thought, I'll just take a look at it now, and as I drove by, I agreed, it, it was just a quiet residential street, and I went through the alley, and it was parking pad, parking pad, parking pad, so it seems like, it's like, like my alley, a lot of people have parking pads, and that seems to be the usual thing, and it does get the cars off the street so that they're not out in front of the house, I just wanted to comment that I agree with, I guess, trustee Sullivan on that.
I wasn't clear on what I meant, when I say off the street, you know, looking at this diagram, even if we gave you the third spot, your car is right there on 15th versus, I don't know where you would put the parking pad, your parking pad's gonna be further back away from 15th, and not-
That's true.
-gonna be impactful for your neighbors. That's the whole point of why we-
That's true, but I think my, I mean, unfortunately, I was out of town the weekend in between, so I wasn't able to get any statements from my neighbors, I think my neighbors would probably appreciate it, because right now, there's so limited parking on 15th, most of my neighbors park on 15th Street, or, I shouldn't say most of them, a lot of my neighbors park on 15th Street, a lot of people who live on Wilmette Avenue park on 15th Street, because they don't have enough room in their garages for their additional cars.
Trustee Dodd?
So when you were, if you could just further clarify, maybe a little bit about not much parking, I did also, similar to many of the trustees, drive past your property yesterday, and I felt like there was ample parking actually on 15th as well as on Maple. And I, and the other thing I'd just say is I recognize one of your things, and I'm struggling with the same thing that many of the other trustees said about hardship, but I think it's very typical, I mean, all of our residential streets, you have to get off them for snow removal, and you have to get off them for leaf blowing, and I happen to live on a street that's only one-sided too, so I'm struggling with, you know, your concern around parking, parking and your concern around the, you know, the concern around the fact that you have to move your cars off the street for snow plowing, and when that's what we expect of every resident within the community. So if you could just speak to those two things.
Okay, so first, if you looked yesterday, there wasn't school yesterday, so there probably were not gonna be as many people at work, there probably weren't gonna be as many people parked on the street. I can't tell you exactly when it gets crowded and when it doesn't, there are days it is so crowded that I actually can barely get out of the driveway because the cars are impinging so closely on our driveway, they're packed in so tightly. I don't know if that happens more at night, I don't know if it's particular people, I haven't tracked the cars themselves. Like I said, I, we're looking, we're looking to redo our driveway, we would, and we were hoping that we might be incentivized to use pavers if we kind of got something in return, which is the ability to make it a little bit wider, because all our, our turn, we have two alternatives, we can either leave it where it is, you know, repave it, you know, reseal it, something like that, we could obviously put it in pavers if we wanted, we could do cement, we also have the option of building the backyard parking pad, and that does increase the impervious surface, and it's, you know, not something that we're likely to do with pavers, and, I mean, it's also, obviously, it's gonna be more expensive and be a security concern, because we don't currently have access to the alley, but that hasn't been questioned or raised, so.
Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you, have a seat, don't go far, we, we may come back to you. So is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak, either in favor or in opposition to the application? Okay, any further questions from the trustees, either from Mr. Adler or for the applicant? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? We don't have to have discussion?
Well, just my one comment, I, I'm not in favor of this, and, and really what, you know, I feel the applicant is, you know, genuine about the backyard, trying not to take down trees, trying to use pavers, and I understand that, but I, I view this as really, this situation applies to a lot of people, there's a lot of people that would, you know, really, their lives would be a lot easier if they didn't have to jockey cars, and, and, and that's really why we would be granting this, and so that's why we, we have this policy now, and so I'd, I'd be opposed to it.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, if you think about last meeting's case, you know, we were talking about, yeah, there may have been, there may have been an impervious surface issue, but that really wasn't what the issue was, at the end of the day, it was the aesthetic of-
Yeah.
-the amount of surface, so, I mean, again, to your point, I don't think there's anything unique about this property, and it is a convenience, and, you know, like in my neighborhood in Kenilworth Gardens, we could have every other house, this could apply to every other house, and we've got, you know, a neighbor across the street who's got a garage that doesn't work, and he's got kids back from college, and, you know, they're constantly moving the three cars around, but, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to live across the street if they turned half their front yard into another parking pad, that, I think there, I think there is an impact, and that's an overall policy impact throughout the village, so this one's hard to grant, given that it applies in so many places.
I agree, I, wrestling where the hardship is, this is one where it's more of the convenience, and I, I get that, and, but, and I try to figure out it with the, if the hardship with the side, the corner lot, but this is why we have the code, and I can't support this.
Yeah, I agree, I think zoning got this one right, it's, I think this would be not supporting the code, and that's what the code is for.
Yeah, I understand, I understand the environmental concerns of adding more impervious surface, but I think that'd have to be balanced by the precedent that we were setting, and the additional parking pads that people would be asking for throughout Wilmette would, would offset that, so I, I think it, it's tough, because this is a hard one that, to set a precedent for.
Don't feel the need, just offering.
Yeah, I'd like to, to offer, you know, some appreciation to the applicant for making some adjustments to the plan with, at the zoning board level. The other observation I would make, though, is that we want, from a public policy perspective, we would want to steer people towards environmentally sound decision-making, including the use of pavers, however, I want to use this opportunity to point out that pavers are not the same as permeable pavers, and as a village, we've yet to quantify the difference between that, and that's a request that I have made in, in other situations, and would potentially be relevant. So I think the applicant has done some things well, and I don't want that to be overlooked, but I'm challenged for the same reasons that my colleagues are, and, you know, I'm troubled, I'm troubled to support this as well.
Trustee Dodd?
I agree with what the other trustee said, I don't see as much of a need for the hardship, I appreciate your willingness to work with, on this issue with us. For me, it's very, I think alleys, that's why we have alleys, and when we have alleys, that's where I expect our parking, parking pads to be in, so I can't support this either.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, again, this item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, it will need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation, and affirmative vote is a vote to overturn the zoning board of appeals recommendation. Madam Clerk, please call the raw motion.
Trustee Wolf?
Nay.
Trustee Sullivan?
No.
Trustee Plunkett?
No.
Trustee Dodd?
No.
Trustee Kersman?
No.
Trustee Pierce?
No.
President Polanski?
Nay. Motion fails, zoning board of appeals recommendation stands. Back to trustee Pierce.
That concludes land use.
Trustee Sullivan, finance committee.
We have one, I am tied at 6.21, which is the presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. I'm gonna put this on the screen, I think the camera's on me, this is the 2019 proposed budget.
I believe, am I turning it over to Mr. Frentzer?
Yes.
Okay. Floor is yours.
Thank you, on behalf of the staff, I'm very pleased to present you with our proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. The proposed budget, as we'll see, includes the lowest percentage increase in the property tax levy in 22 years. It will provide for no increase to sewer rate for the fourth consecutive year, and no increase in vehicle licenses, building permit fees, despite loss of some of our significant sales tax generators. This budget demonstrates the village's continuing strong financial position, and results from the close collaboration between the village board and the staff. The village continues to benefit from its budgeting practices that focus on our quirk, our core mission, reduce expenses, finding efficiencies, taking a prudent conservative approach to revenue projections. Our good governance and sound financial planning that the village board has insisted upon has provided us with a situation where we are consistently meeting, are exceeding our actuarially required pension contributions, we reduce staffing levels while maintaining our core services, we have approved balanced operating budgets and been fortifying our reserves, the village board has created its capital equipment replacement fund to ensure the timely replacement of critical equipment without major fluctuations in the property tax levy, and as I said, we have avoided fee and tax increases in the past, sewer fee has not increased since 2015, water rate not for five of the last seven years, and building permits, vehicle licenses, and ambulance fees have been held flat for more than five years. The budget you are being presented is, again, balanced, it enhances our services and provides for the lowest property tax increase since 1996. The budget will enhance our investment in our core engineering functions with more than $5 million allocated, including $2 million for the annual road program, which includes the reconstruction of Locust Road, repair of three failed alleys, restoration of a failed brick street, repair of Glenview Road, North Bridge sidewalk, and the replacement of four police squad cars. The village, excuse me, additionally, in the water fund, the board will continue to be self-supporting, excuse me, the water fund budget continues to be self-supporting, and reduces the village's reliance on property taxes with roughly a million-dollar transfer annually to the general fund. The proposed budget includes $5 million for continuation of the water plant electrical improvements, which we anticipate having to have done before 2020 when we take on our newest wholesale customer, which will be North Main Township. The budget includes a modest 2.7% adjustment to reflect the increasing personnel contractual and commodity costs over time, this is only the second increase in the last seven years. For the sewer fund, this will be the fourth consecutive year of no increase in the sewer rate. The proposed budget includes 1.97 million for sewer lining, 1.9 million for phase-one engineering of the neighborhood storage, stormwater relief program for the west side, $327,500 for sewer main repairs, another $75,000 for stormwater utility implementation if the board chooses to implement a stormwater utility fee, $72,500 for the rain-ready program that the board has asked us to support, and an additional $60,000 for additional smoke testing, which we use to identify cross-connections between the sanitary and storm sewers on the west side. Our next steps include a budget workshop that will be on October 30th at 7:30 PM. In the meantime, the entire budget, along with the 21-page management letter, is already available online at the village's webpage at wilmette.com. We encourage all residents to read it, we also have hard copies here, if people would prepare to, prefer to examine it in person, but it's quite easy to download from our webpage. There will be additional budget workshops, if necessary, in early November. The village's ordinances require a budget to be adopted before the end of November so that the village can adopt its tax levy ordinance in December before the end of the year and have it on file with the county clerk. As I said, the preparation of the budget reflects the close collaboration between the, the board and the staff, I would like to thank the members of the staff who worked very hard on putting together the budget, they include Assistant Village Manager Mike Bremen, Assistant, excuse me, Director of Administrative Services John Praesner, and our Finance Director Melinda Malloy, as well as all the department heads and deputy department heads who participate, participated in putting it together. We look forward to our opportunity to discuss this with you, and we hope you'll find it to be meeting the goals of the board and the community.
Thank you, Mr. Frentzer, this is, this is the first step in our annual budget process, the introduction, formal introduction of the proposed budget at this meeting, so there's plenty of time for us to, frankly, we haven't, I believe any of us, I haven't reviewed it yet, if it's online already, I doubt anyone had, got a jumpstart on it, but that's, that's the work of every fall for us, and I do want to thank the, the staff for their diligence in managing our budget. As I was coming in this evening to the meeting, I was listening to WBPM, and one of our neighboring communities has a very large budget gap, and they're actually talking about laying off firemen and policemen, and you know you've got budget troubles when you talk about laying off firemen and policemen on the North Shore, so I'm grateful that we are not under those circumstances ourselves as a village. So back to trustee Sullivan.
No, everything else was approved.
Administration Committee, trustee Dodd.
All items were on consent.
Municipal Services Committee, trustee Wolf.
All items on consent.
Public Safety Committee, trustee Kersman.
No report.
Judiciary Committee, trustee Plunkett.
No report.
There are no reports from our special committees, item seven is new business, there's no additional new business to discuss, item eight is adjournment, some have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body pursuant to section 2 sub C sub 1 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act, and discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed pursuant to section 2 sub C sub 21 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, we stand adjourned to executive session. All right, we stand adjourned to executive session. Yep, the beginning.